Okay, that little symbol tells me that we're now recording and online. So we did invite people to be a part of this if they were still worshiping at home and needed to be away. So we are recording this in case others couldn't join us. So thank you all for being here. What a blessing. Not only did I get to worship with you, but you stuck around. That's pretty good. Give yourselves a hand. So friends, I am so excited to be here. This is my first time to have a congregational meeting with you. And I have been waiting and longing for this moment. I've met with many of you one-on-one or in small groups of two or three, or in a little bit larger groups of maybe five to 10 people. But I've been wanting to meet with all of you as well. But I knew the time wasn't, it wasn't time until now. Because what I wanted to do all this time is listen to you. Listen to you in those small groups and one-on-one so I could hear the heartbeat of this church. When a pastor comes to a church, a lot of times people say or ask the question when you first arrive, "Well, what is your vision for this church?" Well, that is a question that is so difficult to answer. Because I am one who really believes after 22 years in ministry, I see a vision that takes form with a certain group of people. So I don't go around in different churches with one vision that goes with me wherever I go. I go and I try to listen to the Holy Spirit, what the Holy Spirit is saying to me and to you and to us. And so there's no way for me to say, "What is the vision? Where are we going?" Until I actually start worshiping with you and meeting with you and hearing from you and hearing the heart that God has put within you. But I'm excited to be here and I'm excited to be your pastor. Because I see such life and such goodness and such devotion to our Lord through the members of this congregation. So thank you. Thank you for being you and I am so excited to be with you. So what I thought we would do today is I thought I would just take some time to reflect back to you what I heard. I think this is important because when I met with you in your, either one-on-one or in small groups, you heard what the other people in your group said, but you didn't get to hear what everybody else in the congregation said. And so I thought it'd be really fun if you got to hear those things. And so if I could, can I get some people to hand these out? Yeah. If you want to get more people, you're welcome to. So they're going to be handing those out. And I'm going to walk through what I heard. And then I'm going to feed back to you some of the ways that I think we should move pretty quickly, based on what I heard from you and what I've seen in the congregation. And I'll tell you that this is all exciting stuff. So I don't see any glaring problems here that we need to change. I just see amazing opportunities that God has for us. So this is all really exciting stuff. So based on the learning, excuse me, the listening sessions that I've had with Cornerstone from May through July, this is what I've heard. And like I've told many, well, how many of you went to one of the listening sessions? Either I met with you one-on-one or you're part of the groups. Raise your hands high. Okay, some of you I've still missed. So we will be in contact. So be sure and holler at me. I might start to assume that you don't want to talk to me. So don't hurt my feelings, okay? Well, before we get to this, I do want to give you some things that are just kind of a part of who I am as a pastor. Because this doesn't come from listening. This just comes from who God created me to be. And I know, I have a lot of compassion for you all because you've been through a lot of change. You've been through as much change as I have. But for me, it's all exciting because you're just wonderful people. But for you, it could be kind of hard. Because you've had to say goodbye to a pastor that you loved well. And you've had to start getting to know me. And I recognize, you know that Sunday where I brought Ben's jacket and his shoes? And I realize that we are two very different people, right? And so there could be a little sense of feeling loss with him leaving and a question about me coming. And I do want to say thank you so much for your gracious welcome to me. Because you have been amazing to welcome me into this place. And I want to recognize that I know that you've had other things going on because you had to say goodbye to Ben. And I love Ben like you love Ben. And God has called him onto different pastures, but I'm delighted to be here. So a little bit about me, I love ministry. You know, you meet people in their field of work and sometimes you wonder, "Do they like what they do?" Do any of you wonder if I like what I do? No. No, I love being a pastor. And if you, any of you ever since the call to go into ministry, come talk to me because I would love to help pave the way for you to begin ministry. We are all called to ministry as Christians, but not all of us are called to full-time ministry. But I love what I do. I've been in ministry about 22 years. You know a lot of my story. I've got three kiddos, an amazing husband. We've both been in ministry together for many years. And he's now taking a leave and he is so delighted to be here as the pastor's husband. Which, what does that include? Whatever he wants it to include, right? He gets to do the ministries he loves to do. So all these videos that you've seen, that's been his handiwork of putting those together. And he's also working with the media team. He and Paul are getting together about kind of revamping the website and things like that. So he's just having so much fun. But I like to have fun in ministry. And my question always, if we're not having fun in ministry, is what are we doing wrong? Because we should be falling more in love with Jesus, more in love with one another, and more in love with the world around us. And we should be having fun if we're doing it right. So if we can't answer those things in the positive, are we falling more in love with Jesus? Are we falling more in love with one another? Are we making a difference in this world around us? Are we having fun? If we can't say yes to those things, let's talk. Because we got to do it again. We got to do something different. So I'm having a great time in ministry with you all. So here are some things that I've heard from you. And I'm just going to rattle through these lists. And so then we can get on to the recommendations that I have for us. None of these are in any order except the top answers I did put very first with some red stars. And that means it was answered that way over and over and over and over and over again, okay? So what do I love about Cornerstone? Everybody say together, "The people." Yes. So so many of you love the people of this congregation. That's what I love about this congregation. You people are amazing. And I think you need to know that. Other things people said, they love the pastors, they love the Bible studies, the sermons, communion, prayer time, friendliness. It feels like home. I heard that many times. They love being known and knowing others, learning the Bible, Stephen Ministries, the size of the congregation. Many people said, "We weren't looking for a mega church." And this is the perfect size to feel like home. They love the fact that we get along with each other, we accept all. We have a lot of diversity in our congregation. That we have Bible-based sermons and teachings. That we have a preschool, that is amazing. We love our Sunday School class. We love the care that we give to one another. We love being in the band. So that was obviously by a band member. We love that it's close to our home, that it's easy to find my niche there. It's my own place to serve. We love the potential of Cornerstone. We love young people in our church and we love the music. We love that people are real and authentic. We love that this is a come-as-you-are style. We love that strangers quickly become friends. That we have an open table for communion. That we have a women's group, outreach ministries, a Young at Heart group. We love the capital campaign meetings. I heard that many times. So those are some things that all of you have said we love about this congregation. Very unusual. Do you have something to say about that, Pastor? You're talking about that last one. I know that they love the capital campaign views. And you'll see this come up in my recommendations a little bit later. Okay, so this was a really fun question that I asked you. As I said, everything about me is about having fun, right? So if you were king or queen for the day, what things would you change? So you'll hear some of your answers, but you'll hear some others. The first two were the ones that were said the most and by far the most. Grow young, and that was just my phrasing of fill the church with children. We need more young families. We want others my age, and that was a young person saying that. Or we want more children and youth programs. The second one that was also said over and over and over, if we could pay off our debt. And so friends, we do have a million-dollar plan. I know as a leader, you always need a million-dollar plan. If a million dollars showed up in your building, what are you going to do with it? Guess what we're going to do with it? Pay off the debt. Amen. Amen. So if any of you are gamblers, which I hope you're not addicted to gambling, but we take all the ties, actually all the money from your gambling. If you decide to gamble, go ahead and bring all the proceeds from that, that meeting. Checks also, whatever it takes, right? No, I say that in complete jest. I'm not a gambler and so don't ever ask me to gamble. Actually, I played right front or right front center, right-left center one time with quarters. Yeah, I played that. I won the kitty, I brought it all to church. So we're all good. Okay, so the top two, grow young and pay off debt. Now the others are not in any sort of order, just like everything else. But here we go. So the best change so far that I see is going to one service. And a lot of people said that. It's been great to get to know one another, hasn't it? To see one another face-to-face and not say, "Oh, I think they're an 8:30 person" or "I think they're a 9:45 person." We love our feeding ministry. Or if I was king or queen of the day, what I'd love to see is a feeding ministry. I'd like to revamp the music ministry. Hire a worship music director. We want to give back to monthly potlucks. We want a new pictorial directory. I've heard that. More tempo in worship. An awning so that when it rains, I can still get in without getting soaked. This person wanted a 9:15 Sunday School hour and 10:30 worship hour. Another person said, "We want to strengthen the children, youth, men's and women's ministries." So all the specialized ministries here. "We want more media volunteers." I bet that was a media team or... It was definitely. Bring back the dinner clubs. "We want a newsletter." "We want to restripe the parking lot." By the way, that was done. Yes, yes. Go trustees, they're doing a great job. "We want to bring back the 8:30 service." "We want a church van." "We'd love the meet and greet time to come back." We would love that if every member who is a member of Cornerstone United Methodist Church would serve in our church. Yes. A prayer workshop. This person would love to see, we would love to see children taught on a deeper level. "We'd love to strengthen Sunday School to be the backbone of our church." "We'd love school tutoring ministry for community children." "We'd love to hire a full-time youth and children's director." "We'd love to have a way to sign in to worship." "We'd love night meetings more than day meetings." No, no, they'd love to move night meetings to day meetings. A monastic rail for the choir. Expand the sound booth. Publicize the preschool. More community feel. And they said this is already starting to happen with some of our socials and things like that. A can-care type of ministry. That's a cancer ministry, which Stephen Ministry really addressed that this morning. Develop the sports, the field for sports. You know that field over here? There was a lot of desire to develop that for the next thing. Whether it's sports or a new building or whatever. But that land is always soggy, so we can't really use it. This person wants the Fall Festival to come back. This person wants the building of the offices and more Sunday School space. Programs to reach our community and the unchurched. Full-time maintenance guy. Guess who said that? Hugh. Hugh said that one. I told him, I said, "We have a full-time maintenance guy. His name is Hugh." Okay, so this person really wanted Sunday School to be at 9:30 and worship at 11:00. An open gym for outside groups. That our church would grow. I heard that a lot. Leadership development and mobilization of our people. This person would like our reluctance to change, to change. So our reluctance to change, to change, right? More activities, more openness to the community and a schedule of nine to 10 Sunday School. Oh, here's some more on this back. And then a schedule of 10 to 10:30 meet and greet and 10:30 to 11:00 worship. A willingness to get out of our comfort zone so we could really reach the community. Monthly potlucks. More game days. More people would know each other, deeper relationships. Increase the number of small groups. Publicize our preschool better. Stronger ties between the church and the preschool. So those are some of your, if I was king or queen for the day, that's what I would change. Now I gave each one of you one of these packets so that you can take this and look it over. And if you're one of those people that didn't raise your hand, like you haven't met with me, these are the questions I'm going to be asking. And so you could always jot down some of your ideas. And this is an open conversation. It doesn't end today. Okay, so this question was all about our reach to the community. So if Cornerstone were to cease to exist, who other than our members would miss us? So the top two answers by far were our preschool families and Feast Elementary. But other community contacts that were mentioned were CAM, Young/Teen Life, Young at Heart, VBS Kids and Their Families. Someone said, "Not many outside of our congregation would miss us." Provisions through Christ. And someone said, "There's a ripple effect." Therefore, people who have never heard of us would feel our absence if we went away. Our scouts and their scout families. Someone said, "Not many." So so many don't know we exist. And then someone else said, "All of the missions for whom we collect." And then there's an organization called the Seamen where we go and serve a meal. So those are some of our, our community connections that are very important here. The reason I wanted to know that is I want to know which connections we need to keep strong and what things we need to really develop more. And so when I heard things like, "I don't think anybody would miss us," my thought was not to get down about it, but it was definitely to see, we have an opportunity. We have an opportunity to be loud and proud about who we are as a congregation, to invite people in because you have something really good going on here that many people could benefit from. Okay, so some of my observations that I've seen and then we'll get on to suggestions for us moving forward. So observations. One, this is an amazing congregation. I've told you that and told you that. The people here are genuinely happy and friendly and love one another. I'm thrilled and honored to be here as your pastor. It seems to me that the transition is going well, but it just could be that I'm having so much fun. So if you see that the transition's not going well or that I'm doing something really wrong, because I wouldn't know, you're going to have to tell me, okay? Because I didn't see what it was like when Pastor Meadows was here or Pastor Lomer was here. I wasn't here. So if there's some way that I can help make this transition better, please let me know. I really am open to these kind of conversations, even the hard conversations. Okay, so what I also noticed is that people seem to be ready to move on from COVID, to get back into ministry and to get their hands and feet ready to help make this transition happen. We had a long year of COVID. It's not over, friends. But we have to recognize that COVID is probably going to be with us long-term as we've seen these spikes and things. It's going to be around. So what is going to be our new normal? And we have to figure that out together. We can't just shut down and stay shut down and call it a day. Because this is a reality. Jesus Christ decided, knowing that COVID would be with us one day and every, every other plague that's been around, Jesus Christ decided, "I am going to use the church to build my kingdom on earth." And so if he's decided to use the church, that's us, to build his kingdom on earth, we can't hang it up. We are called to get our hands dirty and get after it. In whatever safety methods we need to do, but we're called to go. So I'm very pleased that it seems like we are ready to make some of these moves. At this point, I believe that one worship service suits us best. I think the blended style is the way to go because we have some people here who were a part of the contemporary service and some who are part of the traditional service. And you know what? We all love each other and love the Lord enough to worship in various styles. So I think a blended worship is, is what we should go with and that's what we've been going with. I did say that we need to choose a Sunday morning schedule that would accomplish two things. Bolster our Sunday School hour and leave room for a second service when we reach 60 to 70% capacity. As you noticed, we had to make this change before I was able to speak these things out loud. Actually, the church council and I talked through these things. And that was my recommendation, so we made this change for the Sunday. So what we've done, I'll just speak to this real quickly. We decided to move to a 10:30 worship service. After listening to everyone, many of us really love 10 o'clock. I mean, there's no doubt. We love the 10 o'clock hour. But the problem is, is it really made it difficult for Sunday schools. Some met before and some met after. And so when a family comes to me that has youth and children and they want to go to a Sunday School class and say, "When do we go to Sunday School?" And I'm like, "Well, you could leave the kids in the car and you could come in." You know, that's a little bit difficult to do, right? And so we really need a one Sunday School hour where every age group was going to meet. And so pushing worship back a little bit. The other piece of this is so many of you were 8:30 people. And there, I even heard from some of our young families that said, "It was just nice to have an option." Like if we had soccer games that came up at the later hour, we could jump into the 8:30 service. And I'm all about giving people the options because I think every one of us needs to be at church on Sunday morning. And so this also provides the space in our schedule on Sunday morning that we can, as soon as we're 60 to 70% capacity in the 10:30 service, we can pull in an 8:30 service. It'll be a little bit shorter service, but I think it'll be a wonderful thing to bring in. So if you're an 8:30 person, raise your hand if you're an 8:30 person. Yes, several of you. So get all your friends back at 10:30. And as soon as we hit about 200 people, we will then start an 8:30 service again, okay? Because I'm here for all morning, so I'm happy to have worship whenever. But I do feel like there is a critical mass that you need to hit in a congregation to where you're hearing other people sing beside you and you're growing together for it to really have its full benefit on us. And so I do think right now, one service, but as soon as we reach about 200 people, we're going to move to two services. Does that make sense? Okay, so the following areas of ministry are lacking or need some attention. And none of this is a depressing thing. It's just we're going to put some attention on these things. Our financial processes. So over COVID, we had to get real lean on who was helping, who could show up and who could take deposits and things like that. So we've worked with the finance team and they're getting all that, now that you've all come back, they're getting all that worked out. So some of you may be asked to be a counter on the Sunday morning or to help out in certain ways. But I'm so proud of this church because I see, when it comes to the finances, I see no red flags. We've got a good system going. We just needed to add some more people into that process. I see that our worship and music leadership needs some bolstering. I would love to pull in someone who is willing to be hired by our church part-time to lead all of our music. So contemporary, traditional, children's choirs, adult choirs, all of that. I think that would be a blessing. Guest follow-up process. So over COVID, obviously, we weren't doing a whole lot of visiting, things like that. So I've seen that we didn't really have a good process for guest follow-up when I arrived. Not saying that it wasn't happening previously, it just wasn't in place. And so we've been really working on that. Part of the connection cards that you saw, that is helping us get people's information so we can visit. General administration of the church. We had to let go of our church admin a while back. And I've never worked in ministry without an admin. And all the staff here can attest that Heather needs an admin. So it doesn't mean that we're going to hire somebody. I'll talk about this a little bit later. But I've, I've been working with Linda, who she's been fantastic to work with. And we're kind of redesigning her workload to help me out in some areas. Children's ministry, worship technology, youth ministry, IT, communications, website, relationship between the congregants. All of these things are things that we really need to pay attention to because I think they will help us to go to that next level of ministry. So my suggestion is moving forward. I suggest that we add a year to our capital campaign. The reason is because some of you got behind and rightly so because of COVID. We had COVID hit us for over a year. And so I'm recommending that rather than ending, ending the capital campaign when we planned to, which was when? Was it a year from now? A year from now is going to be over. I want to give all of you one more year to either pledge to those because you're a newcomer or to finish out your commitment that you made to the congregation. Because getting our debt paid for is very important to all of us. I think we heard that, right? The other thing is I think this will help us to reengage with our base, our primary members here with updates of what's going on. Where are we with the capital campaign? I hope that you saw when we sent out our most recent statements of giving that I also included an update on where we are with our debts. So I hope that you pull those out when we mail them and you really read over them. Because we want to give you this information and be completely transparent. The other thing I think this would do is to allow, like I mentioned, new folks to jump in. So we've had several new people coming to the church now. And obviously, they weren't here when y'all did this fabulous capital campaign. And so that gives them the chance to say, "Yeah, this is my church home. I want to help pay off that debt." I've heard great things about those meetings that you all pulled off. That that was just a wonderful time to get together, to get to know each other and have a great time together. And so I'm going to be asking this team to kind of reform and come up with a few ways that we can reengage that capital campaign. Okay, so the other thing I found out when I came is that there was a three-year vision that this church had come up with. That the first year, we would really look at worship and how to really make that the best experience we could all have. The second year was going to be discipleship groups where we can focus on growing spiritually and growing in relationship. And then the third year was going to be increasing our community impact with missions. So it's my suggestion that we, instead of starting worship, it was supposed to start during the year of COVID, let's just go ahead and restart this three-year process. So restart with making worship priority because we couldn't make our in-person worship priority during COVID, obviously. And then go through those. Because worship is the touch point that all of us can interact with, no matter what your age or demographic. It's the place we all come to. It's the place where children are blessed, where older people are blessed, where middle-aged are blessed, where youth are here. So we really need to make worship one of those things that is our primary. And then after that, discipleship groups. So many of you mentioned, "I don't know the people in this congregation." Or "I've loved getting to know the people in this congregation with one worship service." Discipleship groups are where you are cared for personally. So if you are in the hospital, sure, we have pastors on staff, one full-time and one part-time. But there's no way that we can get around to everyone, right? So if you need a meal, if you need care, if you need someone to hear you, listen to you, be there for you, come over and do your laundry for you, guess what? It's not going to happen from staff. It's going to be happening from your friends who are in your discipleship groups. Whether that's a Sunday School class or your dinner club or your, your small group that meets in your house during the week in the evening. So we, we need those in order to make sure we're all cared for properly. And then missions, our community impact and what that looks like. So I suggest that we start one year and two, starting this fall. The next thing is restart our fellowship. This has already begun. Obviously, I wrote this down before we, before 4th of July. Because 4th of July was kind of our kickoff to all of our fellowship events starting. And so we'll be looking at approximately like monthly fellowship events. That fellowship team is amazing and they are getting after it. So if you want to have a great time and help plan parties, jump on that team because you won't be alone. We need to review our financial processes and move to an annual audit. This is already being done. Actually, we've already, the church is supposed to have, and I made a mistake. I was supposed to change this to, we budget annually for every three-year audit. That's what the disciplines suggest that we do. And so we're going to get on to that schedule. So our audit will begin in September, is it? Yes. So we've already contracted with a group to do that. It's always an outside group and they just look over everything to make sure it's all good. And they suggest ways that we can improve our processes. So all of that has begun. My recommendation was to hire a worship arts director. And that can also be called a worship leader or a music director. We have already approved that with the finance team, the SPR and the church council. So we are just finalizing that job description and we will be looking for that person. This is what I want to say to you. When I have hired and at one position- When I have hired, and at one position I was in, I had 92 staff members underneath me. And so I was constantly hiring. Oh my goodness. I found that the best people actually came from recommendations of people in my organization. So I want to say to you, we want to hire a part-time worship arts director to handle all of our music leadership. And so get the word out, okay? So eventually, we are going to be putting that job description on our Facebook page, so you will have it. And I just say, send it to all the music people you know. We're going to need your help finding this person, okay? So I definitely need your help there. And also, if you don't have any contacts with anybody in a church, which I hope you do outside of this church, but if you don't, we need you praying. Because the right fit is super important to us. Because this is going to be someone that we're going to welcome into our family. And we're going to take care of them and love on them and celebrate their leadership among us. So be praying for that. My sixth one is to redirect Linda's time and job description to be the church administrator as opposed to the financial secretary. Now, she actually has two jobs right now because she's a financial secretary primarily. But then because we don't have a music director, she's also been leading music. Whoa, that's a lot. And so obviously, if I'm going to be able to pull her into more of the church administrative tasks that I need her to do, we've got to hire that person to lead music pretty quickly because she can't do three jobs. So I am grateful that Linda is willing to be flexible and move in this way. But we are redirecting some of her work and we'll be able to more as we hire somebody. Okay, so number seven is, I'd love to make some changes to our worship space. And Hugh's not here, so I may, I may get in trouble. But I can say this because I don't know what rules y'all have had in the past or whatever. But I would love for our chancel area to have a new look. I would love the back wall to either be like an Austin stone or slats of wood or something like that, just to give us a new look. Because if we're going to focus on, you're clapping back there. If we're going to have a different focus in worship and try to really up our impact here, I think physical change is needed, right? And so I would love to do something like that. Someone mentioned like a modesty rail here, I think that would look fabulous. Definitely some of the worship technology with our, what are these? Projectors? I'm not a very technological person. Projectors and cameras, both of those really need some help. The cameras, Paul was telling me we need two more. That way, they're not having to swing it, you know, for, "Heather's moving again, whoosh." You know, that we could actually have a couple more cameras. And then these projectors, Hugh let me know that if anything goes wrong with those, we're in trouble because you can't even get parts or fix them. So we need to move into the last decade and update those things. I already said that we were going to remove the computers and tables that were around. We had an extra classroom over here and things. Those things have already been done, obviously. Some more worship changes I wanted to see happen were connection cards and pens. That way, and you filled those out today, so well done. That lets me know and also Margaret Kadelka and her team of connect people know who is new with us and who has been with us for a while. So when we have a newcomer come, up until now, I haven't been able to know who they are. So now we can see who are our new people, we can visit them. I believe in six or seven points of contact with people when they first start coming. This team will be able to get them a mug just to say, "Welcome." This team will be able to send them an email, a card, you know, that sort of thing, just so they can know that we miss them. The connect team will also be working on our lost sheep. So who are those people who used to be worshiping with us and are no longer with us? This is an easy time to do this because COVID is what kept so many people away and still does. And so we need to connect with those people. If they are home and will be staying home because of COVID, we need to have regular interaction with them. And I'm a believer that all of us are in ministry and so even those people who are at home can be doing ministry by writing cards, by calling on people who are sick or need prayers. So we want to connect with everyone. I wanted to pull back in our ushers and offering and restart Homebound Communion, which is already getting started, right Pastor Rucker? Homebound Communion is starting this month. So if you know someone homebound who would like Communion, be sure and reach out to Pastor Rucker. That's where the connect team comes in. You see those intentional meeting of newcomers, six points of contact, connecting those newcomers to other people and other ministries in our community. Help them to find out about ministry, the lost sheep, and the section angels. What the section angels will be is we're going to have, we're going to ask all of you to help us with this. Because when Pastor Rucker and I are up front, we can't really do a lot of the meeting of people. Now, we can before the service and we can after the service. But even then, we only get to maybe, maybe 10% of the people. And so we're going to be asking you, I know that most of you sit kind of in the same place every Sunday. That's not a knock on you. Actually, I think this could be using our benefit. When you're sitting in that place, I want you to know every person in your section. And if you don't know their name, ask their name. And if you don't remember their name, the next week, ask their name again. People want to be known by their name. This is why I'm big in the name tags. If you don't wear your name tags, we're also going to assume you're a newcomer, we're going to treat you like it. I'm just joking, I'm just joking. No, but wear your name tags because that helps the rest of us know who's new and who's not new. So this is not just a strategy for me to be able to get to know you and learn your names. It's also a strategy for us as a congregation. It's going to take all of us to grow. And so getting to know, having your name tag on, getting to know everyone in your section will take us very far. Not only do I want you to get to know people, but I want you to go even further and be willing to invite someone to lunch at times or to something else. So maybe you go to Sunday school class. "Hey, next week, do you want to go with me to my Sunday school class?" "Hey, this afternoon, the youth are meeting, I see that you have some youth. I'm going to be taking my kids, do you want to meet up there?" That sort of thing. If you don't feel comfortable with that, here's what I want you to do. Get someone else in your section who obviously would feel comfortable with that and grab them, okay? So I might go up to Becky and say, "Becky, I am terrified to ask someone out to lunch. Would you please invite them to lunch?" Okay, and so let's do that for one another. Because not all of us would be even good at taking someone to lunch. Because if you can't talk, then it's going to be kind of hard to get to know them. But there's enough talkers in this church, praise God, that we can find someone to welcome them. Amen? Okay, so those are some of the ways I say it's going to take all of us. Okay, so I was saying tweak Sunday morning schedule to provide for Sunday school classes and 8:30 service. We've just done that. Overhaul the website to be guest-friendly above all else. So I'm a believer that most people aren't opposed to change, they're opposed to loss, okay? You see what I'm saying? So if we change things, it's not going to be change that upsets you. It'll be a sense of loss that upsets you. Now, when it comes to website, let's just talk through this for a minute. You know your church and you know how to find out information about your church, right? You can always call up here. You have, every email I send, I put my cellphone number on there. You can text me, call me, whatever. Our website is primarily going to be for those who are not the base, you. You can find out what you need. But those who are not connected to our church and don't get to come and hear announcements or don't know Ty and be able to text him about when youth is doing whatever, they don't know Linda and can send her a message. They can't find out about anything. And so my charge to Paul and John as they are revamping this website is to make it guest-friendly above all. Now, the reason I want to bring this up to you is there may be some things that are harder for you to find on the website. Let's talk through that because obviously I want there what you need. But it may not be front and center, okay? Because I want that website to be one that someone who knows nothing about cornerstone would say, "I want to go there," okay? Does that make sense? Okay, so let me know if you sense a loss, like you feel like you're not having what you need in certain places. Let's get it somewhere for you. But it may not be front and center because that is one of our biggest evangelism tools. Okay, the other thing is we want to put tools in your hands to be able to reach the community. Shepherds don't make sheep, sheep make sheep. You've heard that before, right? So I am definitely out in the community and I am talking this church up like crazy, as you can imagine. I can't stop talking in general. But what I want to do is make sure you have the tools in your hands to also reach those, Margaret, you're laughing, to also reach those in your influence. So you have influence over people I would never have influence over. And I have influence over people that you don't have influence over and vice versa with all of us, right? And so what I'm going to be doing every fall and spring is providing you with some opportunity to reach out to your community. So we're going to be doing something this fall that is, what are they called? Sticky notes of love or something like that. Where, starting on August 22nd with our new sermon series on promises, we're going to be giving everyone in our congregation some sticky notes that say our cornerstone information on it. Now, on that sticky note, you can't put any to-do list or any negative comments, okay? So if I was to put my son a note on there, it's not that place where I write, "Clean your room," right? This would be where I put a note that says, "I love you and so does God," right? And so we're going to do the sticky note campaign across our community where you will have sticky notes to put everywhere you go. Whether it's your kid's door or when you're at a restaurant and you just had great service or even if you had bad service, you're going to put a note of love to the people that served you. "Thank you so much, God loves you." And then they have a warm fuzzy from you and they see that it came from our church. So these are the small tools that I want you to have. Thank you Marilyn for printing all of these for us. So yay, I'm just so excited about these because I have a big box of these and we're going to be giving those out mid-August. You know, in the spring, we're going to be doing something called prayer nets. We're going to do a Lent sermon series on prayer. And we're going to have you put these prayer nets up in your yard so that when people walk by, they're going to see that they could write a prayer concern down. They could tie a ribbon on your prayer net. And then they will know that you bring those prayer cards back to the church and we are praying for those people. You see how this can spread here, there, and everywhere? And those things, you don't even have to say a word. That's amazing. It's amazing how we can be the hands and feet of Jesus in so many different ways. So twice a year, I'm wanting to do something like that so that you have the tools. Because I think it's ridiculous for us as pastors to put any kind of guilt on people about not sharing their faith unless I've given you tools to share your faith. So exciting things coming up. Okay, number 13, I think it's the last one I had. Oh, in 2022, when we're looking at discipleship groups, we are going to take a look at what it means to grow young. Because I have heard from you over and over that we need to grow young. We want more programs for our youth and children. We want to welcome new families. We want this place to be bursting with young people. There's nothing more that I would want than that as well. And I love the sounds of children. So if you have children in our worship space and they get a little bit noisy, I love that. That is not a bother at all to me. Yes, I might get a little off track, but wouldn't you hate to not have any sounds of children in this place? Yes, we need children here. It's our role, it's our job as the church to pass on our faith to the next generation. And so in the meantime, this year, we're going to be focusing on worship. Next year, we're going to really focus in on what does it mean to grow young. But in the meantime, we have got to get Sunday school teachers who are willing to give of their time so that you can pass your faith on to the next generation. You will not be left alone or left in a lurch on how to do that. Ashante does a wonderful job of making it easy for all of us to jump in in one way or another to help our kiddos. So friends, if you say that you want to grow young, which in every group I heard that, I need you to step up. I think it was about a week ago, Ashante said, "We only have two Sunday school teachers for youth, probably four children." And I thought, oh, with all the desire that I heard here and I'm not seeing people step up, I just thought I needed to let you know that if you haven't stepped up to teach our children, we need you. Even if it's just once a month, we need you. And I feel like now that we've changed the worship hour and the Sunday school hour, you won't have to even miss worship in order to do that. All you got to do is come a little bit early and just show these kids a whole lot of love. And I promise you, even if you showed up with who you are and a piece of candy, that would even be enough. That would be enough. And I just brought a whole bag of animal crackers today because I got them free at HEB. And so if you need animal crackers, they're in the nursery. You can do whatever it takes, so just love on these kids. It's not scary, it is not hard. Okay, so now I've said a whole lot of words of what I've heard from you and I reflected those back to you and I've offered my recommendations. Any thoughts that you have that are just bubbling up that you would like to share with the greater good? Yes, Margaret?
I would share something that Marilyn is also going to be hearing for our team. I've talked with her and I have asked her if people would make a new pamphlet that we can hand out to our new visitors, but also to our current congregation. It will give quick and easy information about our ministry through the contact emails. Just that broad information that you need when you walk into a church and you go, "Oh, God, now who do I call?" And God doesn't come down and go, "Oh, God, we're here."
Yes, so thank you Marilyn for your willingness to print that out. And so Margaret's talking on behalf of the connect team and obviously, her main thing is she wants to get people connected. And so just some basic information about how they could take those next steps. So important, thank you for working on that and thank you to your team for working on that.
I think the biggest thing growing young is we have to have commitment from parents to bring kids here.
Yes. Yes.
It's hard to offer youth programs when you only have three kids that show up. And unless we can get the parents involved and the commitment there, we can't go anywhere.
Yes. Yeah, so we need, and youth, our volunteers there, Ty and Dora, are there every week. And so I just want you to know that there's strength right there because they are getting to know those kids very well. And so we need parents who are willing to bring those kids. Thank you.
We need kids here.
Yes. Because you can't even play a dodgeball game with three kids, right? Right, right.
You know, even with a couple of kids, it's hard to plan and do when we don't have that support and we don't have those kids coming every week.
Could you all hear that? So we need the commitment of parents and grandparents to bring those kids when we have something planned for kids to come, whether that's children or youth. Just to give you an example, there was two weeks during youth that we brought our son, you know, he's brand new here. And there were no children, no youth there. They were all online. And so he's not willing to come again until we kind of restart in the fall and more people are there and we're not doing online. Because he's like, "I'm not going to show up, I don't know anybody." He's like, "Ty and Dora are wonderful, but..." So we need parents to be willing to go ahead and bring your kids.
I often say, I mean, like as adults, we should invite our friends to the church. I mean, I remember my youth group.
Yes.
Half of them did not tell my church. I took four of them, my girlfriend and...
I'm sorry, I just thought of this. So while we're growing, we need to encourage our youth just to bring their friends. Once school starts, you know, I think it will be easy for them. And that may lead to their families wanting to find a church home as well. Yes, thank you. Paul, it's you. Oh, you're going to, you're going to walk around.
I'll just help with the mic.
Excellent, okay. Yeah, so sorry, I just now thought about this other mic. So if you want to say something, please do.
I just maybe needed clarification. When you said extending the capital campaign?
Yes.
Are we referring to the Set Free Campaign?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Because they were two different names. The Capital Campaign was to build the building. The Debt Free Campaign was to pay for it. Because something happened in the process there.
Well, you know, I'm learning things as I go. So I didn't know there was two different campaigns. So whatever it is to pay off the debts, that's the one I was talking about. That's the one y'all had such a great experience with, right?
That's the one we're in.
Set Free.
Set Free, that's the one we're in.
I have heard that name several times, I just didn't know there was two different things, sorry.
It was my impression that extending the campaign one more year was that everybody would add a fourth year to their three-year commitment as well, as well as catching up. That would be a double aspect.
Okay, so he's saying that there's, it would not only be a time for them to catch up, but add a fourth year to their pledge. So we can have that campaign team kind of talk over the details of that. Thank you. Come on, y'all, this is your time. Give us your feedback. Run, Paul, run.
I have a friend in Tennessee who's very active in Methodist church and they have a program where they go out to schools and promote an activity in the church and invite the children from the schools. Maybe one month it would be for teenagers, some activity that's planned at the church for teenagers. Maybe like I saw and hear about Game Night, but you advertise it in the schools. You send somebody out to talk it up in the schools to come.
Excellent.
And they've had a really good turnout from things of that nature.
I understand that Sci-Fair, they will not send home any things from the church organization that's connected.
What a shame.
That's too bad. Okay, so what, yeah, we all heard what you said, but what you were saying is that Sci-Fair won't let us even send home information? Much less go to the school? Okay, okay. So it's really going to be us telling our neighbors who tell our neighbors what's happening? I mean, that won't keep us from doing ministry, but it does take away one opportunity.
I was sent back what this lady said because I was a Sci-Fair teacher. We cannot even send, have our kids bring in invitations to another birthday party. So they're real strict about not sending out things from anything that's church related.
Okay, good to know.
But it's a great thought. I just, I didn't want us to waste money and time making flyers that we're going to get grown and be taught. This is what they did in Tennessee, something like that.
One really exciting thing that I'm just passionate about is what Marilyn and Bill Allen are willing to do for us through their business. They are going to be sending out flyers because they, in their business, they have all the knowledge on how to do some marketing. And so they're going to be using that knowledge to be able to send out flyers to people who just move into the area and all of us who are already a part of Cornerstone. So you'll be seeing some things come around. So be sure and share those with your neighbors as well.
I have an idea.
Yes.
Hearing what they said from Sci-Fair about the school, I think my wife had an idea that can circumvent that. So would you be...
We always love circumventing ideas.
It is so funny that I'm always told them, but now they come back on me. So one of the things that I shared that if I was queen for the day, I would institute a tutoring program. Now, with COVID, our students have lost 18 months of instruction and that is only going to spiral as the year go on. And so I shared, because I am passionate about teaching kids and as a math coach, I normally work closely with the teachers and with the students. So I really fully understand Sci-Fair's elementary math. I'm not going to venture on talking about high school. But I know that if we can invite the kids in for tutoring, then the parents will come. So if we get the kids' academic going, we're going to help build their spiritual connection as well. Because we're a church, they know we're going to pray, right? And so that's one way to get them in. And I've not discussed the full details, but I can tell you that I had the opportunity to work during summer school and so I got all the math manipulatives that I would need to start that tutoring program, which is just a wonderful experience.
Excellent. Thank you, Sheri. Yes, if we bring something here. And y'all, we have the FLC. I mean, it's just a wonderful place, yes.
And we have the teachers.
We have the teachers, right.
Well, you could get the kids involved. I mean, we have law, high school kids, my oldest is a teenager, that are good students, my niece Riley, that could be here.
Wait, is Wyatt hiding right now? Yes, but we have, we have, we have teachers, we have youth who could all help with this. Excellent. Okay, so just a couple more minutes. Anyone else? Because I don't want to keep you too long. I know your tummies may be a-rumblin'. Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to Linda for doing the three jobs all this time. It's just amazing.
And I'll say that all of the staff here has been fantastic. They've had more change than anybody. And between Ashante, they just popped out, and Pastor Rucker and Linda, they've been amazing to work with. I mean, to deal with me, you've got to be amazing and they are phenomenal.
They're going to enjoy that baked potato meal that you are doing.
Paul, Paul, can you take the mic right back here? Thank you, sir. No, use the mic.
We track these families with kids and elementary, junior high school and all that. So the parents are probably going to be a somewhat younger age. What, and I don't have an answer right now, but we need to start looking at what do we offer them other than a Sunday School class and a worship service to keep them and keep them involved in the church?
Yes. Yeah, good point. And that's where I think discipleship groups come in. And I say that broadly because small groups are great for young families, especially those... Well, you can do small groups for a whole family, like if they have littles at home. We all bring everybody together. You can also do them for just the parents if you have junior high and high school age kids. And then you pair people together based on their life stage. But a lot of what people need right now is fellowship. They need time together with other parents who are struggling with the 13-year-old or with the 12-year-old or what to do with junior high math or whatever it is. And so once we have everything kind of running smoothly here and then we're able to bring in those children to Sunday School and then when their families come, then we connect them together into small groups where they can meet either during the week or on Sunday morning, whichever is best for those groups. But it's amazing how socials bring people together and then you build on that social. So you could have even a men's night that we used to do like a Viking night where no women are allowed and they don't use utensils or napkins. And it's all meats. There's not a vegetable one. You know, things like that that bring men together and then they connect or bring young families together and they connect. Jesus was a God who had parties all the time. He was either having a party or going to a party. And so I'm a big believer in parties. So I will want a list of all of those who have pools in their backyard willing to share those. Because those are the kind of things that we're going to need to do for a lot of our young families. So thank you for bringing that up.
I have a suggestion. I know a lot of people in here are technology challenged. Facebook, YouTube. I can offer some training where that is concerned. Excel, WordPress, PowerPoint, presentation, website design. So if you're willing and parents outside are willing to come, I'll take the time, an evening or weekend, when available, to offer some training to help you navigate that road. I know you have kids who are very versatile with technology and you're wondering how to keep up with them. I can assist in that area.
Excellent. Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Okay, friends. Oh, did I turn this off? No.
I don't want to keep us any longer because I know that I've just been a scared for the power of the Lord. But I don't think you're in trouble.
I want to thank you for coming because I know it's been a long morning. It's been a long few months since I've been trying to get all of these meetings in. Thank you for your patience and all of that. Thank you for meeting with me. Thank you for being amazing church members here because I can see that this church means a lot to you. And I translate that as the Lord means a lot to you. And this is your worship of God is to serve in His church and rightly so. That's what we're called to. So thank you for coming. We've sat for a long time, so why don't we stand? And Pastor Rucker, would you close us in prayer?
Rest in peace. We give thanks and praise for being the ones who is above all, in all, and through all. We know that you'll walk with us in this journey. We give praise and continue to pour our hearts into our minds, envision for what you will serve to be and how we can help make it happen. Guard us from thinking it's always somebody else's God. Help us to hear your voice called in us through our heart. But together, we must be your church. In thy name we keep sleeping, amen.
Amen. Friends, go in peace, love, and serve the Lord.